Council, you're good to go?
Yes.
So now I'll call the Wednesday, October 6, 2021, special meeting of council to order. And the first item on the agenda tonight is item 2.1, and that would be the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Pearson, Counselor G, should be no additions, so special meeting. All in favor? Gary. We do have some unfinished business from a previous council meeting on 4.1, and that is the amendment to policy 81, board appointments to village-owned companies, and amendment to the Vailmont Industrial Park articles of incorporation. Recommendation here that I agree with, that council proceeds to committee the whole to further discuss policy 81 and propose amendments to the Vailmont Industrial Park articles of incorporation. Counselor Blanchett, Counselor G, any discussion before proceeding to committee the whole? It's carried. With that, I now call the committee of the whole to order. Being Wednesday, October 6, 2021, first item on the agenda for the committee of the whole is adoption of this evening's agenda. Counselor G, Counselor Pearson, any additions? Should be, the whole is very focused, but informal. All in favor? Gary. Unfinished business. Amendment of policy 81, board appointments to village-owned properties. We will deal with recommendations as they arise. So for the those in the gallery, this committee, the whole, which council is in now, will make recommendations back to council following this meeting and take it forward to the next regular council meeting, just so everyone's clear. And so with that, do we have any follow-up from staff? Was that correctly, Mr. Officer?
That that works fine by by staff.
So we did entertain a tabling of a motion made at last council meeting regarding policy 81, so perhaps Counselor Blanchett, if you could. Start over.
Okay, so I went to a, the meeting last yesterday, the board meeting for community forests, learned a lot, learned I don't know.
So you might have to mute break. Go ahead.
And so I know that there's some stuff we need to address legally and make sure that everything's up and above board, and staff has made provisions for that. What I would like to suggest and see is that we stick with the board members that they have, and we add two or one counselors as liaisons, as we did before, because that gives us the back and forth information that we needed when we had two counselors on the committee before. It was really great. We learned what was going on. We were kept up to date. I don't always have time to go into everybody's website of all the committees I'm on, because there's like 10. So that was just a good way to let us know what's going on. So I would like to see that. I'd like to see us have a good conversation about our conflict of interest with community forests, because there's some back and forth there that we need to figure out, and we need to work with them to figure out what's going to work best for both sides. Again, we have to stay legal. But I think that that's, that's as far as, that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to keep the board members that are there, because they're all valuable in their own way. They all know different things. And so I think to just add two more of us, or one of us and a staff member, and fix the conflict of interest.
Counselor, how the, reading, reading the reports from our legal counsel, which by far one of the most successful and municipal solicitors in this nation. What, what don't you agree with in, in terms of if a member of a board works and contracts to a corporation should be also able to make a decision for that corporation?
I think that that's where we have to have some discussion with them, because every board runs differently. Like I said, I'm on 10, they all run differently into each other. I know that we have a small pocket of people that are in this business, I get that. So that's where things may run into a bit of trouble. So that's something that we need to discuss with community forest, because there is that small pocket of people that work in that business that are only able to, that are, that we need to keep on that board. And moving forward, I mean, I don't know how they conduct their in-cameras. I don't know how they work. So I was looking for their in-camera policy. I couldn't, I don't have a copy of that. Like how, like when we, where Counselor G and I, we recuse ourselves when anything comes up to do with RBCS. I would assume they do the same thing. I would assume, I don't know. But that sounds to be something that's written down, right? That's, you know, it's, it's a perceived conflict as well as a genuine conflict. So maybe that's something that we need to discuss, so that everybody's on the same page. I think that because for so long, we, you know, like, I think we also have to look at community forests to be celebrated. They've done an amazing job over the years. I mean, if you look at their financials and stuff, it blows you out of the water. So I think we also need to celebrate that and say thank you. And how can we deal with this? I don't feel comfortable myself. I dropped the ball when we did this policy, which I should have said something and said, hey, you know what? We need to talk to community forest about this, and I didn't, and that's on me. So I think now's the time that before everything goes, we've got our legal counsel here, we've got community forest here. Let's have a good conversation and get it done. But get it done so that we're all happy with it, and we're all above board and everything's legal. And away we go.
There's no argument at all from this chair that there's been any sort of misperformance of the current board members. And on an annual basis, it forms part of the minutes. I can congratulate and thank on behalf of the shareholder that exact same performance. They are a thoroughbred of a corporation, doing a lot of great things. No one's arguing that. The only question is, how can we be moved forward with board members that receive checks from the co, from the corporation, they make decisions for?
I looked a lot into different types of boards, whether they were operational boards or governance boards. And from my limited understanding, community forest is a governance board, not an operational board. So would it be possible to set up a working committee of those skilled people that are receiving those checks that could work with the manager on operational topics, provide recommendations, assistance, have informal conversations? And then the manager takes that to the governance board, which doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, loggers. And then move on with that type of model with that, so that they're not losing the expertise, the knowledge, the skills of those people that work in that industry, but still maintaining the integrity of the board with conflict of interest.
See, I, I see no question as to why that couldn't happen. Counselor?
Yeah, I mean, contrary to the information that's being let out, we had this conversation some time ago in a meeting between the two groups, and that was the discussion, is that a working group could be formed of the people involved that are directly being paid by the corporation and recommendation come forward to the governance board, for better word, and move forward. When we, when we recuse ourselves, we're not doing it because we're collecting a paycheck. We're involved with an organization. It's got, it's totally apples and oranges. When you're sitting at the table, and that's your livelihood, you're voting for your paycheck. We're not doing that when we recuse ourselves. Nobody at this table is going, oh, you know, this is going to be bad for them if we don't support. It's, for me, it's apples and oranges. I think we need that separation. And they sit as a working group, working board, they make decisions, and we all congratulate the work they've done. It's, it's an amazing process. But optically, it's a landmine. I mean, conflict of interests, I mean, we've, we've gone over the top with it. From me, for example, having to resign from a regional district for a marketing job, because that's conflict of interest at this table, that's a stretch. Owning a company that is getting directly paid by a corporation, that's not a stretch. I think we have to solve this, and we, we need to come to an agreement, and that's where we have to go.
Counselor?
So what happened with it? Because I just don't remember. But what happened with the conversation we had about the working group? Because I just don't remember that conversation. When we, you said we talked with community forest. What happened with that?
And that was, I can't remember when that meeting was.
Is that the one we did on Zoom?
No, we were in the room.
We're not clear on what meeting you're talking about.
We had a meeting between the two boards. Community forest and.
One second, before you go, Mr. Carson, I'll just get some.
You would not be aware of that meeting, because it was an in-camera meeting of council.
Oh, my apologies, I didn't remember that.
However, there was a discussion that was brought up during the informal meeting with Vailmont Community Forest, the information sharing, sharing meeting, where that, that was discussed briefly, that that could be a tool that would be used, where you would have a working committee that advises the manager that those people who are making the paycheck do not have to sit on the actual board to provide the advice to the company.
Mr. Carson, would you like a chance to speak?
So I think the working group that you're referring to is, it was discussed to have a working group between board and council to work out these details, and that's the meeting we're having tonight.
Can speak up?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, no, the discussion we had in that informational was the working group within Confor as a solution for the conflict of interest. So the contractors would work, sit on a working group. They would have the exact same discussions you have now, but they make a recommendation to the governance board through the manager, however that process works. And then voting takes place there. All it does probably doesn't change a lot, but it gives you that step of distance to take that optically bad situation out of the way. That was, that was the discussion we had at that informational meeting as a step towards testing in our sense.
Okay, I'd also like to say something to, I believe it was Counselor Blanchett that said you couldn't find the articles, or was it?
For the in-camera session.
Procedures that we have.
I just couldn't find the conflict of intersection.
Yeah, okay, it is there. I'm sure we could get it for you. But just to briefly say what it is, if there's anyone in the room that has a conflict of interest there asked to recuse themselves and volunteer. If there's any decision that affects any part of their contract and anything to do with them, you see. So that's, that's how we deal with the conflict of interest so far.
Sorry, Mr. Carson, I have your conflict of interest policy right here, and I would just like to point out subsection 11. And it says, "The board may acknowledge a conflict of interest of one of its directors and act to allow the conflict if it acknowledges the conflict and deems it to be acceptable." That is not a proper provision in a conflict of interest document. That's like saying, if everybody agrees that we don't think it's a problem, then it's not a problem.
Well, in that case, the board would generally say it's, it is a problem, so you do need to recuse yourself.
Is that the latest provision?
Yeah, is that?
This is what you sent me.
I think that there's been.
Which, could you come to the mic, please, Jenny, just because it's? This is, of course, a public meeting, so everybody at home.
Uh, yes, yes, sorry. Those, those were some of the very first ones that you were sent.
Uh, this is actually dated March 2021.
I think there was the revision. Up 2020?
2021.
2021. I think there's been a revision and of, of, of those ones.
Glad to hear that.
I wish I had brought that, brought them with me.
Thank you, Mrs. Weeks. This is.
Yeah, I just want to say that that's something that can be easily dealt with. And where we bit, the template that we used for most of our policies is the B.C. Community Forest Association. So they provided us with a template. We went over it and thought, does this work for us? And if it did, we just left it there. But I think you would be surprised, I'm surprised at how rarely the conflict of interest comes up. Maybe it's because of what Craig is doing, moving the company forward. It doesn't usually, it, we don't make decisions that affect people that you would think have conflict. It, it just rarely comes up, but when it does, they do leave the room. But we could certainly look at that way and see if you've got the newest version, and that's a simple fix. Yeah.
The other thing, sorry, Counselor, before, go ahead.
No, no.
One of the things that, again, policy 81 looks at is it, it's, it's not deemed, again, it's not deemed as a punishment for anything. What it does is it sets a framework for not only this corporation, but any future corporations that we form. And so, for example, should our district heating project proceed? And they are very, very smart. But I'm sorry, Tim and Allison Thompson will not sit on that corporation as a voting director. Just won't happen, because they're not far enough removed to make a decision that will not impact their financial position. It just won't, and that's what this policy really tries to play out is regardless of population, things like the community charter does not differentiate between a population of 2,500, 25,000, or 2 million. Those things don't change. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so go ahead.
And, and I understand that, and I understand the conflict of interest, I get it. I just feel like because this has caused such a rift, I don't like the rift. That's what I am trying to avoid and trying to fix as best as we can. Because whatever decision I make, just myself, I have to live with. And so I want to just make sure that everybody has has a clear view of going forward. So we're going to ask them to have a director, a, a, um, directors, and then we're going to ask them to have a working group. Is that how that's going to look?
How they form their internal committees is completely up to them. What we're asking them is to adhere to a village-laid policy of the shareholder that in his case, they would have, they could retain 42% of their board. You'll, you'll remember from the delegation, Mr. Carson is retired, has no affiliation with the Conflor dog. You'll recall from the delegation, Mr. Mickelash is a employee of the administrative force, no affiliation. The current signing forester is trying to retire. And when Ms. Duncan obtains her professional designation, Mrs. Jackman can come back and sit on that board all day long. So, and, and Mr. Piper, if he just leaves those sort yards, sort yard roads alone, more than welcome to stay. So in actual fact, by April or May of next year, they'll have 50%, 57% of their board. The only changes that this would make, and, and the amendments to the VIP articles of incorporation, is that there be two members of council and a member of staff there. That's it.
And I think to make sure too, that everyone understands that staff sitting on that board, they act as liaisons. They, yes, they are voting member, but they are liaisons to come back and say, hey, this is what's going on. And because we are a shareholder, we do have a voice at the table.
You have a voice at the table, but you're not able to serve two masters.
No.
Sorry, if I could, I'd like to just point out exactly what this policy is about and what the purpose of the policy is. So to be clear, this is a policy for the village of Vailmont. And this policy is, it, it provides direction, or I should say guidance to council, and how the process is that they appoint people to the board of any company that the village owns. It does lie, it does lay out how the, how the board should be composed of those numbers of people and how decisions should be made. Other than that, this policy really governs only the, only, the only authority that the, the village has on the companies, and that is how they appoint members to the board. That's the only connection it has to the company, and that's it.
Okay, so going forward, just so that I'm clear and everybody else is clear. So going forward with policy 81, as it reads right now, the, once this was adopted, the.
Yes, once it'll, once it is adopted as amended.
Correct.
At a future meeting.
Yes, sorry. Then the the two boards will have to release three members and get three more members, five more members, because there'll be two counselors on there. They'll have to, they're going to have to advertise for three more members then. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, so currently.
We did send three.
And, and, and remember this, this will not come into effect until January 1st, 2022. And so right now, with what I understand is the resignation of Mr. Mickelson and the passing of Mr. Reimer, there's two vacancies on that board. Is that correct?
There's one vacancy because of Peter Reimer.
Okay.
We haven't, you know, Fern offered to resign because he thought that that might save us from all this upheaval. It appears that that won't make any difference. So at the moment, we're just going to replace Peter, and then we were going to move forward. But I'm just a little confused. You know that we came here hoping that we could ask questions and have a little back and forth.
Certainly can, yeah.
Okay, so the question for all of us always has been, why do this? Things were going well. Why are we changing? Is it just conflict of interest that's made you want to change what Lindsay came up with? With the limited partnership, has that changed? And why do we need more counselors on the board? Not that it didn't work well before, but why do you want to make such a big change when things are going well? And why did you make this? Why did you even think about making this change without discussing it with us? The last time we changed the structure of the company, the village came to us, and they talked to us about what their idea was, how to protect the village, how to make it good. And we said, yeah, we like it. And then we had a public meeting, and the public went, yeah, we like it. But this time, for some reason, here's this new policy that we had no input. No one asked us if it would work. And I know we've heard this idea, Sherry from Owen, about having a different committee. You know, it's the monthly meeting all the time and us working together all the time that helps the board be so successful, in our opinion. You know, I mean, technically, yes, you could be separate, but you know, people lose interest and go away. If, if the board members are committed to meeting every month, they do their homework, and they just, they keep informed and they keep interacting. And I think Craig would agree that that's really helpful to him. And for the few times that we have the conflict, if they leave the room, you know, it doesn't seem to be a problem. The other thing is, and I'm going ahead now, because I still have some other questions, but we kind of broke this thing into the makeup of the council and the conflict of interest. And I know they're interrelated, but it's difficult to, to come, you know, to understand it all or to come up with options that address both at the same time. So what we thought was that as far as conflict of interest goes, perhaps, well, actually, at this meeting, we thought we would discuss options.
True.
And we went with total options, right? From no con, zero conflict, which I believe is what policy 81 is suggesting, that nobody on the board have conflict. And then the opposite would be, they all have conflict, and they, and then with conflict, of course, we have degrees of conflict. You know, like when you think of Jerry Piper, I would say that's a minimal conflict, but there is some conflict. And then maybe you go all the way to Vern Mickelson, that's perceived to be substantial conflict. So is there not an option somewhere in the middle that allows there to be these qualified people that are so helpful? As long as it's not extreme. And I know McBride had a case where they had an extreme conflict, and that guy, well, many probably put the latest one anyway, and so he resigned, or he was asked to resign. And that solved the problem. They still have members with conflict, but they're working through it. And the option with council, the same thing. We thought the option could be all counselors, all village, which McBride tried and didn't work very well. And the other extreme would be no, no village staff, no counselors, which is what we have now. Maybe there's a place in the middle. Polly's option sounded wonderful. We do have the option of going to nine. That would leave us with the, still the number of qualified people to help Craig with the two companies. And it would, it would solve the problem of the liaison. And I see that's a problem, and we recognize that, especially during that Zoom meeting. Susan recognized you guys need a communication strategy. Yeah, we do, or hopefully, or we thought there wouldn't have been a problem had we had better communication.
So let's, let's, let's talk, let's talk, let's talk conflict. And I, I thank you for raising it. In this room, there's absolutely zero scalability of conflict. It's either you have it or you don't. For, for, for five members of council, you either have.
Well, that's how you do it as a village.
Yeah, that's how legally we are. We have to.
All right.
We have to. There is no question. It is written in, in, in provincial legislation that says, you got a conflict, you will not make a decision on that topic. There, again, we can hear from our collective legal counsel, but in my mind, there is no scalability of conflict. It's either yes or no. It's, it's very black or white.
I just think that it limits us extremely.
And there's no question, it will.
New people we want to recruit can't come. Oh, no, he can't be on the board because he has a conflict. He can't be on the board either, and you start going, whoa.
Yeah, your, your, your board selection may be a challenge. But it's a, it's a challenge that, that may have to be realized.
Because you say you're not allowed to, does that mean that your forestry company is not?
Without question.
Just one item about that, though. Oh, and I see Donnie isn't here tonight. I presume that's because there's a conflict between.
She's just absent. I don't know why. But she would, if she was here, she'd probably declare conflict and step out.
But you have that procedure.
Yes. Yes, we do.
So do we.
So any, any, any time.
But there's a reason why we don't have village staff on council. But there's a reason why we don't have village staff on council. They wouldn't be allowed to keep their position and be paid by the village and be on council. That's where the, the difference is. So if they're being paid by the corporation they're representing on the board, they can't keep both. They have to either leave one or go with the other. So if I work for the village and I wanted to be on council, I would have to leave my job with the village in order to sit here. Yes, there's conflicts that come up and I would leave the room, but I can't do both. And I think that's the problem is that you have people working for the corporations who are also sitting at the table voting. That's where I see the difference.
Yeah, one thing, well, a few notes about that. Vern has an evergreen contract with, came with the quota from Carrier. Um, and the way that Craig manages the rate of pay for any contractor, whether they are on the board or not, is he has a, a list from Carrier of what they pay. And they have, it's all broken down into how steep it is and how far from landing. It's very detailed to come up with a rate of pay. So the, the board never uh, sets rates of pay. It's the manager's job and he has a procedure for that, which comes from a third party. So that, to me, limits conflict of interest for a bit.
Limits, may not eliminate it.
Well, it eliminates it as far as rate of pay is concerned.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
The contractors, the logging contractors. The logging contractors, tractors do not have a saying where they log, what they log, where they send the wood to, anything like that. That's all made, the board doesn't even have that. The man, my manage, myself and my staff, we figure out where to log, what to do, where to send the wood. We um, we may ask the board if you want us to tender certain things, those kinds of things. But we don't, the board doesn't tell me, you should go build a road here. We, they don't ever do that. It's not, it's not an operational. You guys seem to think it's an operational board. It's really not. The, my management team and I, we figure out the operations and we deal with that kind of stuff.
That's not in question, Craig.
So you, you just, it's, it, but it's all part of this, right? And it's, you know, Ainsley's our signing forester. But she doesn't, we, she doesn't uh, direct us to do certain things. We ask her, we wanna log this block. What do you think? Do, do you wanna review it? Do you wanna go for a walk? What do you think? How would, should we proceed with this? That's how she helps us with that. Right?
Can you compensate her financially for that?
Of course. So so you, you, I, I see where you guys are coming from, and you gotta be very careful here, right? Because I've been here for, I've been in the valley for twenty five years and I've seen lots of things happen. Um, I saw what happened to McBride Community Forest for probably ten to fifteen years. They were very dominated by the village and they had very little uh, relevant experience in the forest industry. And we're much more complex than they were at that time, right now. But they didn't have that experience and they thought they were doing a great job. They really did. They thought everything was wonderful. The checks are coming in when, you know, people are working, parade for us, right? But it, and they thought that until it all crumbled and it came crashing down, because they just, they didn't know they were doing a poor job. They had no idea. Right?
They also had a majority of the board.
Yes.
Right.
They had, they dominated the board.
So if, if with two counselors and a member of staff coming onto your board, it's only forty three percent. The majority, the majority of decision making remains in the court.
Sure.
Of the community forest.
But you need, you need, you need that experience. You need that know-how. You need people that understand. It's not even just about forestry. You need people that understand business, legal, about recreation, but all these different things. And then you can all come together and make a decision, right? Like you, you guys talk about working groups and that, that sounds really clunky and inefficient to me. It would, like, we're right now, we meet once a month and we're like bam, 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 we can make decisions and that's how we proceed and that's how we're successful. If you slow things down, like, we're not a government organization. We do not run that way. We run like an industry. We run like Dunkley. We run like Carrier. We run, like, the smaller, not the can forests and the big shareholders and all that stuff. We don't do that. We're very inefficient, we're very efficient.
We do get that. We do get that, but nothing will impact, I believe personally, will impact your efficiency by having board members in the room that are not paid by the corporation. I don't, I, I just don't get it that.
No. I, and I don't have a problem with that either. And I don't have a problem with one of you guys sitting on the board. I don't have a problem with that. That worked before and that worked great. We're, and it's probably very helpful with communication between board and and council, right? We need that. We're definitely lacking that.
Agreed.
You know, we were, right? And the COVID didn't help, right? Because we couldn't get together. And that was a problem too, right? So I'm not, I'm not making excuses. It's just something we realize and we have to, we have to do better job at, right?
I did miss the Christmas dinner.
Yeah, and the barbecues and all those kinds of things, they all help, right? Because everybody can't get on a computer and look at the minutes and say, yes, this is what they're doing. It's not everybody's forte, right? Some people need to be face to face. Some people need to computers, and people need to pick up the phone. Everybody's different. So we have to, we gotta figure that out, and we will. Um, so coming back to it, like, we started this in two thousand seventeen. Mayor Townsend was in with their council. Adam Davy was the C O and our board, and we all got together and we all decided we wanted to do this. This was its best for the community and for the company, right, and the village. And the three reasons we did it, it was to limit the liability for the village, which I haven't heard anybody say anything about here, um, for tax purposes, which we solved, and to protect the company from political upheaval. So those are the three pillars why we did all this.
But could just, what is political upheaval? This.
Uh, I don't know if I'd say directly this, but, but say, say some nutball mayor gets in with a crazy council and they wanna change the world and they wanna do all this wild stuff, right?
Okay.
And we, there, there's a buffer then between that. And that happens sometimes, right? We've seen that. I've seen that McBride. And I think I've seen that here too.
However, however, the, the, the upheaval of, of which you speak to, regardless of nutballs or not, um, the, the council still remains the shareholder, whether there's a, a corporate separation through a limited partnership. That, that won't change. Those, uh, the first four paragraphs of the articles in corporation will not change. Um, because they are the articles. Um, things that will change or could be uh, board selection, of course. And that's what we're trying to set now in a policy. And so we're protecting everyone from those potential conflicts. And I mean, um, and I, and I'd like that you did bring up the twenty eighteen, the twenty seventeen discussions. Um, we've got Lindsay on Zoom. Um, Mr. Purcell, could you speak to um, the limited partnership formation and uh, the, the, the then liability on the corporation of the village of Bellmount? Um, yes, we solved the taxi, the taxation issue. But could you speak to the liability to the village of Bellmount and the inability for uh, village representation to be sitting in the uh, corporation's boardroom? Making decisions on that?
Yeah, um, uh, just before I get to that, I just wanted to, to bring your attention to, to section eighteen of the bylaws, which already addresses uh, conflicts of interest uh, with respect to directors. I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with that section.
Please enlighten us.
Yeah, section, section eighteen of the uh, industrial park. Um, and I see the articles are slightly different between community forest and industrial park, but in industrial park, um, just gonna bring it up here.
We haven't cut to that one yet.
Yeah, but, but the principles are basically the same.
Sure.
So in a situation where there's a conflict of interest and, and it's defined, it's a pecuniary interest, there's some, some kind of financial uh, interest or something related to that, the director is prohibited under the articles from voting on that particular matter. So they have to excuse themselves from the business when dealing with a contract in which they have a pecuniary interest. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, so that's already provided for in, in the articles themselves.
Okay, and then to, to Mr. Prior's point of when we have these discussions, uh, back in twenty eighteen, um, remind me Stan Lee.
Stan Mitchell.
Stan Mitchell.
Stan Mitchell, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and yourself, uh, both, uh, that's right, but uh, Lindsay, at, at first, uh, there was a liability thought that uh, through the limited partnership, there could be no representation on the board of directors of the limited partnership. Could, could you speak to that? And then the bit of a bit of a change in tone in, in terms of the discussions we're having today where uh, there is no view of liability uh, to the village for having representation on the board?
Yeah, I, I would say that, um, it, it's correct. The limited partnership was set up for tax reasons to protect the uh, municipality from, from income tax liability. Um, and it was also set up to, to protect the municipality from, from liability of any nature whatsoever. It's like there's a, there's an added layer of protection there. Um, the rules with respect to, um, I guess we're, we're basically talking about liability from an income tax perspective, because the limited partnership was primarily set up on, on the basis of uh, income tax liability. Is that what you're thinking here? Is that, is that the primary concern here?
Well, bo- both that, uh, Lindsay, and there was discussions in twenty eighteen and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, that should something, should an incident um, happen in the, in the, in the, in the bush, for example, um, that the municipality could have been sued civilly uh, because of a decision made by a village representation sitting on that board. Is that?
Yeah.
That was, that was, that was the fear.
That was part of it, is exactly what happened in McBride with one of their fiber agreements. Went sideways, they got sued. They just sorted it out, but it took them ten, I don't know, maybe ten years, close to ten years. So that's one of the things we are trying to, in the start, to get away from, because we don't want you guys getting sued, and we're getting big. We have like twenty people in the, in the site. We have a hundred thousand meters. You know, we're getting to that point where there has to be a separation or else you guys are an easy target if it's perceived that you have made a motion or if you supported something that leads to a lawsuit.
I can almost guarantee that any member of this council will not be starting a mill, signing their own fiber agreement with the corporation and then coming back and suing us.
No, but if you come on the board and you make a motion to do something and that motion leads to something going sideways, you could, your, your name is right there, front and center. This is why we're trying to protect the village. We're not.
So, so can we ask the lawyer? So Lindsay, with that, what would happen in that case? I'm sitting on their board. I made a motion to do X something and something happened. What, what's, what happens then?
Well, you're, you're acting in your capacity as an individual serving as a director on the board. And you may be a representative of the municipality, but in effect, you're a counselor. You're wearing two hats. You're, you're a municipal counselor and you're also a director for the corporation. And, and uh, that's not unlike probably most of the directors that serve. They tend to wear, they, they wear a hat as a director of the corporation, but they also may be a director of their own personal company, or, you know, they might have some other interest in another area. So um, from my perspective, that's not going to impact or increase potential for liability against the municipality. Um, Craig, I, I respect what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, but if, if municipal counselors sit on the corporate board for uh, Bellmount Community Forest or Industrial Park and they're acting as directors and they're making decisions which they think are in the best interest of that particular corporation, then there's a very minimal possibility of any liability flowing back to the municipality. The only, uh, the only case where that could happen is if the municipalities clearly acting in bad faith and doing something which they know is improper or illegal. And they're somehow influencing the, the direction or the decision-making of the board. And so I think that that's a very unlikely scenario that would occur. And as long as the corporation is doing business as a corporation, it's entering into its contracts, it's getting its licenses and its permits as a corporation, it's gonna be the corporation that faces liability if there's any problems that arise. It's not gonna flow back to the shareholder being in the municipality.
I don't, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Lindsay. That's a complete one eighty from where we started. Um, I, I talked to our lawyers when we started this. The village had their lawyers. We had our lawyers. We were all in agreement, so we decided to use the village lawyer, right? So we had to, just, well, to, to, to make it efficient and to save money, right? Because we're all working together for the same goal. Um, we, our lawyer gave us his take at the very start, which was very, very similar to Lindsay's at the start. Um, and I asked him recently, it, has anything changed? Like, from what you're, from what you wrote then to what you see now, has anything changed? And he said, no. The more, generally speaking, the more, um, presence you have on the board of the community forest, the more liability you have. If you have one person, there's this much. If you have two people, it doubles. If you have three people, you know, it just keeps going up and up, the liability. That's what, that's what the legal advice that I've been told. I'm not a lawyer, you know.
Same, that's why we have.
Trying to muddle my way through all this, just, you know, just like the rest of us, but so, you know, and, and it's you guys. If, if you're okay with liability, then, you know, fly at it, right? If you guys are worried about liability to the village, then you need to maybe
So, so.
Look into this a bit more.
Civil law.
Right? That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I'm probably, you know, all this, I'm probably overstepping my boundaries. I know I am. Because I'm the general manager and I have really have no say in the board makeup. It's not my deal. You guys set the board. I follow my board's direction. That's the deal, right? So I'm not trying to I'm trying to protect the company, is what I'm trying to do. And I'm trying to go with these three things that started this whole process right from the start with Mayor Council, Mayor Council. So that's what I'm trying to do. I'm not I'm trying, I'm trying to walk a fine line here. Maybe not.
That's, that's not.
Doing a very good job. I'm not sure, but.
No one's denying uh, your, your faith to the board and your loyalty to the company. Nobody's doing, n- nobody is questioning that. Um, what we are trying to achieve is a, a uh, compliance with uh, the legal standards that the shareholder is bound to follow. And that's all we're trying to achieve. That's what, that's what policy eighty one, should we, should we adopt it at a future meeting? Uh, and also address um, the the slight variation between the two articles, V I P and the, and the V C F, uh, to bring them into alignment. That's it. We're not trying to uphe- upheave the corporation. Um, will it be challenges? Without question. You, you, you've, you've had a, a, a bit of a, a management um, board for, since, since its inception, it's correct. Since you've come on the board and even prior, no one's questioning, there's going to be some challenges and some hiccups moving forward. Um, that's all I, that's all I got to say with that. I believe, uh, Counselor G, you know that.
I had one question. Is, is part of the issue here that the number of counselors that are being pointed, would you prefer to have one over two? Is that part of the issue? Or no, that's not part of it?
But, no, what, what we said is, it's not, the problem isn't having counselors on the board. I believe one would be better than two, because that would leave more seats available for people with experience. And again, it's not just forestry. We really need other.
And then my, my next question was, um, Craig, you mentioned that you work with your staff and you, you do a bunch of work beforehand and then you take those recommendations to the board? And Lindsay helps you before you go to the board? Or you said, you mentioned she helps you.
I only help them in the bush.
In the bush, yeah. It's for her, um, the blocks that we log and the roads. The blocks that we log and the roads that we build, does that kind of thing?
Right, but you're getting advice and help and information from her?
From our signing forester.
Okay.
For Lindsay or sign a forester, not not Lindsay or president. So you know, I mean, it's a little.
Yeah, that's.
They choose the block, they make all the decisions where everything is happening. I get called in at the last minute. And they show me what they've drafted. And I sometimes box, sometimes I don't. I look at their prescription and from a forest management point of view, does this make sense? And I sign it, but that. You know, I I have no decision about how many blocks I look at or or where they're going or. You know, I just sign the I sign the site plans and the more and the graph would be showing us. As Owen knows, going down, down, down as a land takes more and more over.
So you give all that information prior to the board meetings?
Can you can you explain uh what a signing forester does?
Okay, so assigning forester, every site plan, every block that's logged has to have a plan. Before you start harvesting it. And that plan has to be signed stamped by a professional forester. And that's what I do. Currently, that's what I do is I sign the site plans. But I don't, you know, it just doesn't ever enter into any of the business as a board member.
Does that help, Counselor?
Yeah. I know Susan Mulkey had made it sound like it was a really big job. I mean. Yeah, I sign it, I know, and I just hope they log it.
You make prescriptions legal.
To what they have said they would do. But outside of that, I work for other people too, you know, I work for the other community forests, I work for the woodlots. This is just one of my jobs.
Thank you for that, Counselor.
Yeah, I mean, just to follow along, uh Counselor G's um thread there. Um so when you started, Craig, you. You basically said. All the decisions are made. And come to you and no decisions are made at the at the board table at that point. You as manager, you've already set how that work is being done. So.
For operations.
So that decision's already made. So if you've made that decision, you come to the board with a recommendation. As long as it's, I mean, we're talking. At all board. That decision can still be. Radified. I don't come to the board with the decision of where to log, where to build. Roads and that kind of stuff. That's not really what we talked about. I let them know, like in my update, I let them know we're logging here. We'll build a road here, we'll put a bridge in here. Like the last meeting, we talked about purchasing a bridge, a capital expenditure for purchase of bridge because. I need it, it makes our operation more efficient, so I got permission to buy a bridge for thirty thousand dollars. What's other things we talked about?
The map.
Talk about rig mats, about purchasing as a capital expenditure rig match to help our operations. Um it wasn't, I wasn't asking you, you should put them in on this road because of this, this, and this, I need approval for you guys to do. No, it's not like that.
Yeah.
That's about that kind of stuff, it's about, like in the VIP, it's about possibly building. We're having trouble in town with accommodations, right? Because there's nowhere to live, our mill managers having a hard time figuring out a way to be here. Like like half the people around there. So we talked about looking into the possibility of building maybe a couple cabins and some RV pads on the site, you know, things like that. You know, we we talked a lot about the mill that we that we're building right now. And the purchase of that and that kind of stuff. You know, those are the kinds of things we. We talk about, it's not operation, it's not about operations, I tell them what we're doing with operations.
Yes, so to me, that sounds like you want to look for board members who are have a financial background.
That would be great.
You know, not, it doesn't necessarily have to be forestry people who are re- getting remuneration from the company. There's a lot of professional people that have knowledge about all these different topics that could fill those seats on your board without the conflict of interest.
Yes, but in the end, it's a forestry company, the VCF.
Yeah.
And the and the and the VIP is an industrial lands company with a mill on it. So we need people that understand forestry and we need people that understand milling. And we also need everything else, right? Like Peter Roman was wonderful when he was here. He had legal, he had business, he was, he was, he didn't. Insurance, all that kind of stuff, right? He wasn't forestry guy, but he added to the team, right? You need a.
Trying to make is that you can find board members that maybe not have a.
Of course.
Background in forestry, that they may have backgrounds in other areas that still qualify and would be add to the team.
That's true, and that's in our our policies about recruitment that we want, you know, we want people, we don't all have to be forestry. But I believe, I was trying to think, who has financial capabilities that we could ask to apply for a position? And I went down the main street of town and almost everyone there would have a conflict. To me, like Jason Vanderwill, good businessman, most of what he's doing, but he buys stuff from us, right? Okay, that won't work. Well, bank manager, Jerry Allen. But we invest with C I B C, would that be a conflict? You know, you just go, oh crap, this gets difficult. And yet Peter was so useful. So.
Without question.
Why can't we, you know, other, and when you said, oh, and excuse me, that. You're not allowed to, but other villages do have people on boards that have some conflict. And they manage it, they don't eliminate it, they manage it.
No, what I. When it comes down to um. Representation on council, representation on committees of council. There's there is, there's absolutely zero gray area there. It 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 is um clearly black and white.
This is, this is for village, we are uh we are a company. That operates separate at arm's distance from the village.
Limited.
So we don't have to follow the same rules.
You said you wanted to be a template for your village, future village companies.
Policy eighty-one would be a template for current and future uh village companies.
You don't have to do that, you don't have to do that.
So again, this policy is the village's policy that it will use to manage conflict of interest. On the boards of of the companies that it appoints. It's a tool that the village uses to manage conflict of interest.
Yes.
How you manage your conflict of interest is up to you, provided that, you know, hopefully you. It's actually up to the articles of the corporation and the bylaws of the company. But for the village, policy eighty-one is their tool, it's council's tool. It's how they get to decide who will be on the board to avoid conflicts of interest, that's the point of it.
No, I fully understand that. I guess it, to me, it doesn't have to be all or nothing.
So.
Why can't we compromise?
So you will have your own policy of conflict of interest, we have our own, but we will assign who goes on to your board. Then within your board, you have your own policies, bylaws, all of that kind of stuff. Are you guys feeling um? Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are you guys feeling like we're trying to rip you all apart? Like, is that is that how you're feeling?
Our perception of the whole thing is that. You're doing it from an interest of increasing communication. And managing perceived conflict of interest. And we agree with that. We want, we want to do the same thing, but the thing that it seems to us that you're missing. If you take off the people that are working to do the job right now. There just won't be enough people to take their place, enough experience because of the size of our community. So in that case, if if that's the case, and you can check on that too, you already have like. Advertising for other board members and you've got three responses. Uh none of which are forestry related people, exactly.
None of our what?
Forestry related people. They they could have something to offer the board, for sure. So if from those three applications, we chose one for the present position. They'd probably be a very good member of the board. But. You have to look at the whole picture. In order to decide whether to implement policy eighty-one. And particularly whether to implement it right now, when they're we're in the middle of building a mill. And we are actually lacking experience on the board. For enough people that have no experience.
There's six, five people on that board currently without milling experience. So there's one person on that board, you're on yourself.
Yeah.
Right. But everyone else on that board understands maybe not the nuances of milling, but generally the. What milling is all about. It log goes in one end, lumber comes out the other.
Do have an understanding that way because they work in the forest industry. But as far as managing a mill, um we have a new manager now. But to be able.
And that's his job.
In order for us to give him what he needs to work with, we have to know how it works.
Right, but just how, just as Craig uh elegantly said. When he needs something in the bush, like a bridge or rig mats, he explains it in basically high level terms that we need a bridge. Uh I need thirty, I need, I need you to approve thirty thousand dollars, these are the reasons why. You don't have to be versed in forestry to understand that bridges are important. And same with when the new mill manager makes a recommendation to the VIP board or whomever he reports to. Uh we need money for a new head rig, uh this one's broken. Certainly don't need a million experience to go, that's, we should probably replace that.
Yeah, that's that's on an individual things, that's probably the case of most of them. But there are overall directions that the mill needs to go, and that's what the board would be.
You'll certainly send, you'll certainly send uh uh make um strategic directions for the mill manager to go there. Correct? And he'll run the day to day, just like Craig does.
So the mill was set up to be this specialty product mill, which means you're making as many different things as possible. But.
Based on markets and things of that nature?
Yeah, so you have choice of markets.
Yeah.
But everywhere along the line, all the way from following the tree and putting it on the truck and hauling it. Everybody will say, oh, it's a lot easier to do short logs. You do short logs, you can't saw there, you put timbers. That's where the board has to keep track of that. That's overall direction for the song, so the mill manager has to make the mill do what the board has directed to do.
Right, so when. I don't want to nitpick scenarios. But. There, the board is now getting into operations where. The mill manager would like to go a direction, you have a very experienced uh foresters on the board saying, you know what? You should probably do short logs, it's easier, it's less expensive, blah blah blah. That to me is is an operational decision, not a strategic direction set by the board, I just. Sorry, I I just don't agree with that word, I really don't.
Well, that that is where the the mill would fail on that point, if there isn't anybody that keeps that in mind that. We're aiming for. Specialty mill that does all the all these different products. Then it turns into competing with big mills and Prince George and Gwinell and Kamloops and every other place. The same product.
If you're if you're hiring a mill manager that leaves a. Mill of this capacity can compete with dimensional markets, don't know if you've hired the right person. Uh you're a specialty mill through and through, then there's no question there, you're competing with, you know. Castle golf out of Castle Guard, tho- those are your competition, you're not competing with Carrier and.
Well, that's the, that's the aim. But it's hard to keep that clear sometimes.
Just quick comment too, and we uh we keep bouncing around the definition and and and. I don't think at this point we can use the term perceived conflict of interest.
Is that not what you're you're addressing with policy?
Not perceived, this is a direct conflict of interest. When a board member as a contractor. Collects a paycheck from the corporation that's sitting on the board, that's not perceived. That can't get any more straightforward, that's what we're trying to deal with. Perceived com- with is if I sit on another board, decision comes to council that could benefit that board. I'm not making any money off it, but it's a perceived conflict, we recuse ourselves. For for a board member who was also a contractor. His paycheck is made out from. Community forest. That's a straight line, that's not perceived, that is real conflict.
But if he's not making decisions that affect anything to do with his business.
It's that's, that's where it's tough because. We all watch the news, we see what's happening in the world right from bottom to top. And it's a pretty straight line and it's it's what people see, it's optics. I mean, and I I preach optics all day long when it comes to this stuff. You know, when the public asks questions about it. And it's, it doesn't matter if it's it's a five dollar check and delivered water. It's. For me, that's a real conflict of interest, not personal. And I think that's the just definition we need to really work towards. And solve that optic problem.
I wanted to uh talk about um people who. Have forestry background, who would sit on the board of directors. And it had been mentioned that uh you know, we've got some people who are retired. And not to um take away any of, you know, forty, fifty years worth of wisdom. That's to be respected. However. If you're thinking about a template that might affect the future. I think you also have to look at people who work and who are younger. Uh they may be in their twenties, thirties, forties, and they also have something to bring to the table, and they are not retired. And they also work in the forest industry. We have some dynamic and amazing young people. And they work sometimes. For the community forest, that is not their bread and butter, it is part of the work that they do because that is the way of the forest industry. There must be some way to allow a percentage of 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 work. And actually direct payment. For somebody who sits as a director on the board, as long as the. The conflict of interest is managed. I think that we have been talking about conflict of interest going around in circles saying, you know, this is conflict of interest. And there's no doubt that there is conflict interest, but we must make provision to provide for conflict of interest. And I think the key is is to get to the board and sit together and and draft out what is. What is conflict of interest and when you are not going to be involved with any kind of decision-making? Because you don't want to fill up a board with a bunch of retirees in 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 all respect. But it is wonderful over the. In the ten years that I have been with the the community forest, I've seen some very good young people come on. And they've moved on because, you know, there wasn't work or or uh you know, other things come up. And we've had board members on there who've been very productive and very good people. And we've had um uh counselors on there who've also been very good and very good people. And I I think it would be really important for for this council, I was thrilled to see Holly. Yesterday at the the meeting, and she could see what was happening. It would be a thrill to see you. To come to these open, regular boards. To come to these open, regular board meetings. And see how this board works, there is no smoke and mirrors with this board. And they do have conflict of interest at times, and I know that because I say. I look and I do the agenda every month and I go, okay, do we have conflict? And these this this board that we have, they're wise. And they go, I'm not in the room, I am refusing from this meeting, and if you read the minutes. It says when they are refused to turn the room. And so. You know, I listen to all this and I go, yeah, I know municipal politics. But. There is a difference between business and municipality. You guys are elected every four years, you're in, you're out, you know, it's revolving revolving doors, this. There's been a core of of the very first. Directors that have come on at the beginning of this. And they're ready to move on, let's recruit some great young, dynamic people. But the way you're setting it up, you're not gonna get that. And so, you know, I I listened to Lindsay, I listened to you, Wayne, and I just go, it doesn't work, not for a corporation. You've got to make some kind of provision and manage for it, it don't be afraid of conflict of interest. Manage for conflict of interest.
I am speechless. So therefore I will ask Mr. Purcell to maybe speak to the. Gray area and a scalability of conflict of interest.
Well, I I think one thing that we haven't talked about and and you know, obviously I can't make decisions on behalf of the now for the.
Can we the volume up a little bit, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me okay now?
We'll just get it a little bit more, Lindsay, please.
Okay. I mean, there's there's gonna have to be some business decisions made, and I guess my role is just to provide legal advice and tell you what I think the law says. One of one of the things that we haven't really talked about is. Conflict of interest and addressing it from the perspective of protecting directors from liability. And under the law, if a director. Acts at a conflict of interest and they they earn money from that. They are potentially liable to to reimburse that income back to the shareholder if if a conflict of interest is found. And so. You know, I hear I hear what's being said, and I understand the circumstances here, this is a small community, you have a limited pool of people to appoint as directors, but. But the conflict of interest discussion also needs to consider the fact that the directors themselves can put themselves in a situation where they might face personal liability for their. For money that they earn from their operations and in their role as directors. And so I think I think everybody has to consider that as well. We're not only trying to protect the village, but it's also a matter of protecting the directors themselves.
Did you want to add to that, Mr. Robinson?
No, no, I'm no, I was actually gonna ask if we could have Mr. Purcell speak.
Go ahead. I'm just getting restless, but what I think you said, Lindsay, is that. The director might be at risk by being on the board if they have some conflict. And I guess what we're thinking is why can't we draft? Amend our policy or something. That will address that or make the director clear about it when they come on the board. You know, we're looking for a way to compromise here instead of saying no conflict, can we not manage it? Maybe we do it differently than the village does, but. In the interest of the success of the company, surely there's a way to manage this conflict of interest.
But you're all you're also. Assuming. Ainsley that. Without some sort of conflict. The corporation will fail. Is that is that what I'm hearing? You're we are, if we eliminate conflict of interest. There will be absolutely catastrophic failure.
I never said catastrophic failure. Yeah, Craig will suffer without. I presume without our help or without without people with with experience, and I know you got sidetracked on the mill thing, but. Mills and forests, there's timber supply, there's it's more than just, we want to do this. And you need a sawyer to understand it. We also need to look at our timber supply of the whole. The big picture, and that's where the forestry experience comes in to help with the milling experience.
But you would have that, Ainsley, you have. Or you have yourself when you.
But I have conflict, so I wouldn't be there.
Finally retire from the professional life, you more than welcome to sit on the board.
Well, there might not be an opening, I don't know, but.
I'm firmly certain, Ainsley, if you made your services known to sit on a board no conflict. They would probably make room for you.
It's not that I want to stay, I just want to stay long enough that I feel there's a good succession plan. You know.
Raise will be has a vast, I mean, between Gordon and and Ray, there's.
But that's just us, Owen, I mean, that's just us, and Janie made a really good point about recruitment and younger people. And we all, you know, we go through, oh, what young people could we get on the board because we need that? And every single one of them that works in the forest industry somehow at some time. Would get it gets paid by the check, so. We're limiting ourselves, I I just, I'm sure there's a way, I'm sure there's a compromise. That we could amend our policy of or conflict of interest. Whatever to satisfy. Maybe not, we can't satisfy you, but I I just, I think there must be a way, and that's what we'd really like to explore, rather than say it can't be done. I believe it can be done, maybe we could move forward. Talk to some other people, find a way. Because otherwise we're limited, we're not gonna get in this little town. We're not gonna get as many qualified people as we should get.
Constable.
Can we can we ask our legal. Okay, Lindsay, can we, is there a way to do what Ainsley said to put up a. Sheet of paper together that manages the conflict of interest for the current board of directors? And future ones?
Well, I think it's it's a fine line and. I mean, I think the cleanest way to do it would be to. And and obviously, again, I'm just giving you advice, I'm not recommending one way or the other, but. I think the cleanest way to do it is to have a clear. Conflict of interest policy such as the one you drafted, where appointments to the board have absolutely no conflicts. In their duties as directors. That's the cleanest way to do it, and then to address the the comments of Ainsley about having expertise, and I think this was brought up earlier. You establish an advisory committee or something like that, of people that are actively involved in the forestry community, they've got the knowledge, they've got the experience. They can meet with the directors on a regular basis and provide their input. And directors can make decisions. Which they think are in the best interest of the corporation, whether they accept or. Disregard those recommendations, they have that input from people with expertise and experience. I think that's the cleanest way to do it to avoid any potential for conflict of interest, but. If you're gonna consider some kind of a compromise, I think there's more risks. Particularly to those directors. As well for the municipality, and that would be to. First of all, give them. Clear direction. As to when and when they cannot participate in. Board meetings and make decisions. And the need to recuse themselves in situations where there's. A conflict of interest.
Follow.
Okay, so this is to the to the board, so if. If this policy at some point goes through as amended. If. You have three new board members and you have an advisory group. Would it work if you were all at the same meeting together, the advisory group is there? You the items on the agenda gets discussed and then the board, the working group advises. Or recommends to the board, and then the board says yes, no, whatever, would that work?
Well, maybe Craig could speak to that. Yeah, I mean, the whole issue of this advisory group, I guess we.
So basically, what it would be would be you guys would. Everybody that was there yesterday would be there, but there would be three extra people or four extra people. But the current. The 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 three that are in conflict would not. Decide they would recommend to the board, and then the board. Would say yes, no, whatever. So everybody's still gonna be there in that room at that meeting. The only thing is that the directors that are in conflict according to this policy. Would not have put their hand up, they would have said, okay, I think this is a good thing. I would recommend that we do this, then let's just say that these are the people that are on the board, then we'd say, okay, yes, go for it. If it looks like that.
I I get, you know, what I think Holly is that. It would be nice if we could go back now and talk about, I mean, that was the whole purpose of this meeting was to bring out some options, you know. We, I think we know now where policy eighty-one came from, it seems to be conflict of interest is the biggest thing. Why you need two people on the board, I don't know where that came from.
That actually comes from the Fairmont Community Forest articles of the corporation, no, your existing articles. It states two council members.
Yeah, because that's the way.
And one staff member.
Okay, so what you're saying is you've gone back to the way it was when Owen and Peter were on our board. But we didn't, we did have a staff person at one time, but it it gets a bit unwieldier. Why why would you need that so many people? Do you have an extra staff person that wants to come to our meetings?
It would be the C A O, it's 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 it states. That it would be the C A O, no, no, in the in the policy, it states it'd be the C A O.
Really want to come to each of our meetings?
No.
Then why recommend it?
It's my job.
Is it a good idea?
As a corporate officer, I do whatever I have to do for the sake of the village. So when I am told to do, come to a meeting, I come to a meeting. I spend whatever time is necessary in order to do this job, and if you don't mind, I would just like to step back a little bit and talk a little bit about. What it means to have a manager and have a board and this idea of having experts. We do this quite often in municipal government. We have a lift station that's going to be put in next year. I am not an engineer and nobody on this board is an engineer. My is the mayor, he probably knows more about that than anybody else on this board, but. Or I should say on this council, we rely on our contractors that are going to come in and put in those that lift station. We rely on their expertise, they come, they speak to staff, they also speak to council and help provide that information. That's how we make sure that everybody on council knows what's going on. I don't need professional politicians on council. They can be professional politicians, what I need are representatives of the community because that's why they were voted in. They can be anybody of any education level whatsoever, it's my job as the C A O to make sure that they have all the information they need. To be able to make an informed decision for the benefit of the community, and I am confident and I know. That Craig is able to do the same thing because he is a competent manager.
And how would that help recruiting young people? How would that solve a problem?
Sorry, if you're asking me. Rec- recruitment. I guess the question is, do you know that there are young people that want to be on the board? Okay, so same thing here, if somebody who wants to be on council, they would run to be on council. There are certain stipulations that they would have to go through, such as. They would not be able to be an employee of the village in order to run for council, so it'd be the same thing.
You're next, Eugene.
I just want to change the subject very slightly, but especially since we have Lindsay here tonight. There is a difference between the company purpose in the. Community forest articles and the V I P articles. And. I didn't actually notice that until very recently. Should have noticed it when the companies were formed.
Sorry, Gordon, that was.
I I should have noticed that when the companies were formed, we all should have.
Was that for board selection?
No, it's for the purpose of the company. It's right at the beginning of the articles. It's a major change in purpose. On the V I P company. And it gets away from the original intent. Of the community forest, which was to be a benefit to the whole community. Inside the whole Robson Valley, inside and outside of the village. So in discussing.
You have operation, you have operating area in Prestonspur?
No, it's it's the it's for the benefit of. Everybody in that area, like we hire contractors from the pride sometimes.
Sure.
Anybody in that area can be an employee of the company. But the the company purpose in the. Community forest articles. It took us probably weeks to come up with those. And in conjunction with the council at the time, you know, we put them back and forth and back and forth. To make sure that they followed the intent of setting up a community forest. And the articles in the V I P at the moment. Pretty well all say it's for the benefit of the village. And I would like if you if the articles were going to be amended, it seems like they might, they have to be. So I would like the V I P articles amended to match the. Community forest articles in the company purpose. Yes.
So just so I'm clear, and so the the council is clear. You would like the company purpose because we're back and forth because this is a committed wall. You would like the company purpose of the Belmont Industrial Park. To match. The company purpose of the Belmont Community Forest.
Yes.
Okay.
There may have to be. A very slight difference because. The community forest company purpose starts out by saying is to manage the forest, so in that respect.
Manage industrial lands.
Yeah, but what it what it should match in is. Who the the company is trying to benefit.
We have a copy of the first page, one of.
Sorry, do not have that with me.
Yeah, and also for for Lindsay, do you know why these? Articles were changed for the company purpose?
Well, I wasn't around when the Community Forest was incorporated, but the Community Forest articles would be. Mirroring the. The ideals or the the purposes of Community Forest in British Columbia. So. Those purposes are set out in in legislation and and regulations. So community forests are subject to certain statutory constraints that other corporations are not. Subject to. And so. The articles for Community Forest would be typical of your of a community forest, and they would be. Reflecting those purposes as set on in the legislation and regulations. The. And those purposes are to manage and administer a community forest. Industrial park has a different purpose, and those purposes are set out in the articles, it's to manage the assets, it's to. Enter into various businesses that may or may not be related to the community forest, so it has a lot more flexibility than the community forest. So I think the short answer to your question is the two corporations have different purposes. They're not intended to do the same thing. And I don't think I would recommend that you have identical purposes for both corporations because that would defeat the purpose of having these two separate corporations.
Uh, no, I wasn't actually recommending that they have identical purposes, but. The general intent of the purposes should be the same as far as what what the companies are trying to do for the community.
And that can be done, I guess, if if council wants to do that, we could amend the company purpose in section two point one of the articles to do that.
It would, it might be a good a a good item for a further meeting. To council and ourselves.
Okay, thanks Gordon. Thanks Lindsay. Mr. Chairman.
To me, there are always degrees of um, conflict of interest. And I would point out yourself with your parents being uh, owners of spiral contracting. There is the possibility there of conflict. There's always degrees, there's always uh, ways to manage it. And to me to have zero conflict is, is a theoretical point. Because someone can always benefit from the decisions that are made by the Community Forest. Not just on a, on a corporate level, but on an individual level as well.
But I'm, to your point, I'm not a day-to-day contractor for the village. I don't do work every single day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Neither do you. Um, so I think, I think that's a, a bit exaggerated uh, when it comes down to uh, conflict and, and my personal situation. As uh, uh, Counselor Pearson pointed out, uh, he had a great job lined up with the regional district president for George. Great, awesome, nice retirement gift. Unselected, he had to turn that down. Completely eradicate his, what could have been just a great conversation with everybody in the community visiting offering. It's not a possibility because it is Eugene, that black and white.
To me, there are always shades. And it always can be taken up as, no, you have a conflict of interest. Depending on the perspective that you particularly have. What I'm trying to say is there's always degrees of conflict of interest.
Thanks.
Um, it keeps bringing us back to, is it not possible that we could have further discussion about conflict of interest? It seems to be the biggest problem here.
Um, I think we could probably solve it tonight.
I don't, I don't see that it can be solved because you're seem to be saying to us, there's no, there's no way, it's black and white. Sorry.
It, it's not just, it's not us, Angie, as, it, it's slightly us. But we also have one of the top municipal law firms that is also uh, making recommendations to us. Uh.
You're talking about Lindsay?
Yeah, uh, that, I mean, that had a lot to do with the uh, both the articles and uh, policy eighty-one. Um, the best and cleanest course of action is just to remove the conflict.
That's true. I get that. Is that really what you wanna do? Is that what the public wants? Holly seems to be willing to compromise.
Yes.
I just think maybe.
Counselor G might be willing to compromise.
Farther on this.
She is but one vote on this.
I see that, yeah. Yeah.
I don't think, and we won't speak for her, but I don't think Counselor G is willing to compromise her integrity and the conflict of interest. Am I wrong?
No, I would say from all of my experience in boards, whether it be corporate, nonprofit municipal. Rule number one oh one. I declare that I do not have a pecuniary interest. I will not receive remuneration for the work that I'm doing on this board. And that goes from a small little organization like the food bank. I can't even take a can of soup as soon as I sit on the board. All the way up to giant corporations, political groups. It's just as soon as you're receiving that one dollar, you're not on the board voting. Does that mean that I can't give you my uh, opinion, my expertise, my knowledge, my skill? No, I can, I can give you my recommendation. I can tell you what I think. But the person who's voting yes or no, has not received a dollar for that vote. That's my stance on that. And yes, I do understand the perception of conflict. There's perceived conflict. Well, maybe I'm biased in my decision because I'm associated with this group. But have they paid me? That's where my line draws as far as any organization that I sit on or work with.
And, and I, I respect that and I, you know, but I'm sure there are lots of other boards. That do. Okay, well, maybe we could go back to the drawing board, talk to the Community Forest Association. See if there are examples where they've worked out a compromise. Uh, can Janie speak or just?
Yeah, Counselor G, sorry. Yeah, two things and, and to respond, uh, Janie, uh, I would, I'd love to have been at your meeting yesterday and I had actually replied that I was. And then I realized that it, Tuesday at three o'clock, I'm on committee of council with tourism committee. But as long as it's not Tuesday at three. It's usually Monday at four. Okay, well, there you go. Yeah, so that's, that's why I wasn't at this one cuz I had replied to you right away that I was coming and then it's like, yeah, and, and trust me, I can't keep track of my own calendar these days, so um. And again, there's no finger point. We're not, we're not trying to be the bad guys. I mean, we live in a world of C Y A. And this is, this is where we can get in trouble. You know, and it's just not a matter of leaving the room because the decision has pretty much been made while you're at the table and then you leave the vote for the vote. That's why, I mean, I don't understand the resistance because I truly believe by having that working group goes over the decisions, makes the recommendations, can be explained to a knowledgeable board. It doesn't have to be industry knowledgeable, but you know, as long as they can understand basics. That, that eliminates it right there. You've, you've put the brake. And I'm sorry, I, I mean, I agree with Counselor G and there's not a lot of gray areas in terms of conflict, I mean. I tried for great, great area on a highway, I don't like it, the over speeding, it doesn't work for me either, so. But. Janie.
Through all this process, um, I, I, I also have looked at other different kind of uh, board makeups and uh, though I was looking at one for the Vancouver General Hospital, I thought, I wonder if they have um, doctors on their board. So I said, gee, well, yes, they do. They have two and then they have it mixed made of uh, you know, people from business and finance, just like this, um, this uh, Belmont Community Forest and Belmont Industrial Park would like to have their board also with a balance board. And I try to find their conflict of interest or see, you know, what, how these doctors would be on a board and they would be paid. But for example, I look at, looked at one of the doctors and he was uh, head of the surgery department. Do I know that he's retired and has absolutely no conflict of interest? I can't answer that. But I'm saying that they have the expertise of two doctors on that board that I saw. Then I look at work safe and you may say, well, everybody wants to be work safe these days, so it's good to have um, you know, the board makeup, it would obviously, everybody wants to be work safe. But what I notice is they are all industry and they all influence the work safe. And then they have observer from uh, workers' compensation. And I guess my point is, and I'll go back to what I said before, is not to be afraid of conflict of interest, but have a clear set of guidelines that how you will manage conflict of interest when it comes up. Rather than saying no conflict of interest cuz we're scared and we don't know how to deal with that. So we just won't have it. And I think that's a mistake. And I think it alienates bringing on working class, younger board of directors. And I am, that, that's my opinion. And so there are some models out there where there is conflict of interest. And not to be afraid of it. But to deal with it, be transparent and move forward. Identify it and it must be identified before each meeting and be able to be identified during a meeting. And that's my opinion.
Mr. Carson.
Just a, a point of clarity, uh, for Pete. When someone recuses themselves during the meeting, they recuse themselves before any discussion on the issue. If it's something that affects them, so that the issue isn't discussed in front of them.
And I, I do agree there. I've been in that situation. Yep. Mr. Pryor. Um, we're not trying to be quick.
No, no, I know, but we're at that point, I guess. Um, I would recommend that you call Susan Mulkey of the Community Forest Association and run this by her and get her opinion. And I would also recommend that you talk to maybe Lucille Green in McBride. She's a counselor and she's on the board of directors for the Community Forest. And cuz they've gone through all this before and we're just replaying the past basically here, it feels like to me. Um, do your due diligence. Don't just make these, don't make a rash decision. Do your due diligence, do your homework, figure out what's best, get a bunch of different and then go. That's what I would recommend.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Wrapping up.
Okay, well, if, if no one's going to the mic.
I guess that's me again. Um, yes, Craig says what we all think. I think um, we would hope that you won't make a decision tonight, that you will go back, think about it. We could go back, talk to Susan, don't trust us, see what they're doing eventually. Talk to McBride. I'm surprised if you have not already talked to McBride. They would have such good advice for you. They've been through it. They've tried every model and, and now they're finally digging out of the hole and.
They're not, sorry Lindsay, they are not in the hole because of board selection. They are in the hole because of outrageous, poor decision making.
Because no one on the board, they were all counselors. They didn't know what was going on.
We're not trying to take over the board.
Yeah.
There are no questions there.
No.
And it should not even be an assumption that we're trying to take over the board. Again, even with your current board makeup, you would still retain fifty-seven percent of the vote. It's not.
Yeah, I know you're doing the percentage on, but it's not a lot of people. It's only, you only leave us with what, four?
And, and, and all experts.
Also, tonight was one of the first times I heard that four was retired. So I do work for the board.
Well, it was, it was, it was during your delegation that it was reflected uh, in, in writing, uh, the, the piece of paper that it, it did say that. You'll have to uh.
You can blame Ray, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is Ray on the line? Did he wanna speak to that maybe? Um. Thank you, Angela.
Okay.
Do you have anything, do you have anything for?
I, I just wanted to say, I hope you don't rush this decision. I think it's really important to the company. And I think that when the company is successful, the village of Belmont is successful. And, and the public is successful when our company is successful. And I don't like limiting limiting the ability of the company to have a good, important, competent board because of fear. There are ways to manage it and I hope that you will look at some ways because I believe it can be managed successfully.
I guess stop paying your contractors would be one of them. That would be, that would be super easy.
Stop what?
Stop paying your contractors. And then they could sit on the board all day long.
Yeah.
I suggest. Anything further, counsel, during the committee of the whole? Uh, there wasn't a whole lot on the uh, Belmont Industrial Park Incorporated. Did anybody raise more than that? Um, there was some reflection on the purpose. Um, but also there's a a slight uh, change needed to match the board director's selection. That is identified in the Belmont Community Forest, but is not uh, does not match to the Belmont Industrial Park. That's the other thing that we were going to consider uh, at the table. Decision, Counselor, did you have anything to speak to that? No.
So it seems the, the question is whether to amend the V I P articles or to amend the uh, Community Forest articles. And I think it might be even both because it depends on how many counselors you actually decide to have on the board and whether they're voting. So the articles need to be amended after the decision about the board makeup is made.
Counselor?
Uh, the articles are pretty clear that it's two counselors and then, and a staff member.
Yeah, that would be.
And then we would be matching.
Expertise from the general public.
But that's the purpose of the Community Forest. Yeah, they're not in, in agreement.
That's, that's right, Gordon. And, and, and what we're trying to make uh, in agreement is the V I P articles uh, in terms of board makeup uh, to the Community Forest articles.
Yep, that's, that's correct, but it seems to me that we're still in the process, like the council and the board are in the process of figuring out what the makeup of the board is going to be.
Right.
So the articles of one or the other will need to be changed or both to match that decision.
But if you chose one counselor instead of two.
Oh, I see, I see.
We have to determine the makeup before we change the articles.
Yes.
I, I see your point. Any further dream to be to the whole? Any further comments from the gallery? Other recommendations coming from the committee of the whole? Under unfinished business. Five point one, five point two, or five point one for now. Amendment, amendment of policy eighty-one and board assignments.
We're still in committee of the whole.
We are still in committee of the whole. Simply making a recommendation back to counsel, Counselor G.
Um, I know this is a big, big thing, but I think my recommendation would be that we move forward with policy eighty-one as far as the remuneration piece is concerned and conflict of interest. But that we reduce the number of council members from two to one and one staff. And that in there and would be a compromise.
And one staff.
One staff, one council member.
And uh, the rest to form from an expert.
From the following advice of our legal advice, yeah.
Sir, seconder for that recommendation?
Read that back, please.
Sure, the recommendation, if I got this right, uh, Counselor Jean makes a recommendation uh, to amend policy eighty-one, the makeup of the board from two to one. Council members of council and one member of staff. She also recommends that the conflict of interest remain. Is that correct?
So five point one and five point two would not change.
No, no, five point one, we're looking at a recommendation from the committee of the whole. And there is a recommendation that has been suggested that the board makeup be changed from two counselors to one counselor, one member of council, pardon me, and one staff member. And keeping the conflict of interest section of policy eighty-one.
Yeah. Paraphrase, so in effect, the only change will be to the number of council members appointed to the board from two to one.
Paraphrase, so in effect, the only change will be to the number of council members appointed to the board from two to one.
You'll second that, sir? Just on a recommendation.
So is your recommendation that the staff member be a voting member?
I didn't hear that recommendation. I just, of, of the terms of the policy eighty-one, I heard the recommendation that there'd be a reduction of council, members of council from two to one. And that the staff person remains. There was no suggestion to whether they'd be voting or not. Whatever, whatever the, I'm guessing, counselor, whatever you see in policy eighty-one of that staff person, okay.
I don't have it in front of me.
They would be a voting member then, as the current, the current.
The staff is not voting. Voting directors and one village staff member who will not be a voting member. That's what we have written down in policy eighty-one.
That's, that's, that's an old copy.
I have an old copy?
Yes, that's not the.
May I have a new copy?
I don't have it with me.
We got time. They changed over the years. I believe Bannon was there. No disrespect, and I just sent a quick email to my seven o'clock meeting that I will be late. Why don't we take a five-minute recess? We can have our biological break. If you need, if you need Washington, it's just, if you need Washington, it's just to this.
I don't think I'm gonna make my seven o'clock meeting.
That's why I just want to send a quick meeting.
It's my meeting, though.
Yeah, true, yeah. Trying to find it.
I don't think they're understanding the advisory, can be how that could work.
Yeah, see, this one's January first, that one's April first.
This is the draft version, yes. And so you can see here, so this is coming straight out of the
Oh, from the, from, from. Well, that's, that's the report that we.
It doesn't state that they're not a voting member.
So like everybody within these articles, one, two, and three would be a voting member.
It says seven voting directors.
Seven voting directors, yeah.
Seven voting directors. Section two, two point one, a board will consist of seven voting directors. And two point three, A, B, and C outlines to make up.
Do you see what that's actually?
Recommendation goes to the next meeting and then it's discussed. Yeah, this is not a decision, this is a recommendation. We don't have to follow up. As high as the recommendation. No, and I, and I, I know that I, you know.
You know what?
We all know where we all stand.
You know, though, it's, it's being discussed and that's what matters.
And I want to make sure that it's clear to everybody because it's not always clear for, not as smart as personal.
But you know, that's, that was your intention for this, was that it could be discussed and that's happened and that's, that's good, that's, that's what it's.
Yeah, we don't actually make decisions during. Just get everybody seated, who am we missing? And Brianne, I think. Come on a recess back in the committee of the whole. Is this, is this to the recommendation presented by first and seconded by council G and council person or just general?
This is generally, a member of the public. And someone that does work as an employee for a contractor who works for the community force. I just feel like there's, there should be a little more due diligence, taking part on the committee, potentially maybe talking to other reports in BC because there is a lot of models with boards. Like Clearwater, for example, maybe, or McBride. There's a lot of different places. I think we could get some good insight to, to progress with this decision, but. Yeah, I just think the due diligence could be a little more in depth. I think any corporate board is, is important to have a really in-depth experience level that a council, it makes sense to have members of public that maybe don't have the experience. But in, in industry, especially forestry, it's the margins are very tight, so if you're not efficient, decision-making process can be problems. Pretty much. What I came up to say. I'm not gonna tell it.
I think you did a fine job, yeah.
I'd like to just follow up on that. I did do a little bit of research. The Revelstoke Community Forest, which agreed is, they've been around for a long time, probably one of the older ones. And very successful, seven board members, mayor, two city councils, counselors, city administrator, and three appointees. I did look into the appointees and not one of them had conflict at all. The only one that came close was a professional forester that was retired. And we did look into Wells Gray as well. They have a subcommittee like we were talking about today that made recommendations. And I believe it was Stephanie Wadleger is a, a go-between between those two boards and general public. So I found that really interesting that they is somebody with massive amounts of background in all industries, not just forestry, mills, gravel pits, everything, you know? And he would, he was an intermediate. I have no idea if he's paid or not paid or whatever. But I did look into a couple of other ones. There are lots of different examples, but those are the two that I did look into. Yeah, well, there's, there's, there, there are two ways of doing it.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Robinson.
Sure.
Would you like to make any sort of assertion that some due diligence has been done?
Yeah, I just, I, I want people to rest assured that I have spent more hours than I can count researching this very topic. This has been a year that I've been working on this. Several hours speaking to legal counsel, reaching out to other community forests, reaching out to other CAOs of other communities and all community forests. I compiled spreadsheets of information, so I just want people to be rest assured that I did reach out to other local governments. I will say this, there's one I did not reach out to, and that was McBride. Yes, I did. Sorry, so what I reached out to them, talking about.
For the public at home, there's a question from the gallery regarding potential conflict of interest and the research done through the District of Clearwater Community Forest. Is that correct? Okay, just because the people at home can't hear you in the gallery.
So one thing I'd like to state, first of all, is that community forests have many different governance models, so they're not all limited partnerships. You know, that some of them, you know, the, the village still is the, the general partner, for example, or the local government. There's other areas where you have uh, two local governments and a First Nation government that are the shareholders, for example, of the company. So there's, there's many different models. Did I reach out to Clearwater to gather information? Yes. Did I ask them if any of their board members had conflicts of interest? No, because as a corporate officer, you don't allow conflict of interest. It's something that is ingrained within me. A conflict of interest is black and white. I unfortunately, I know, I know, yeah, there are shades of gray, but when it comes to my role, I have to speak out against conflict of interest or else I'm not doing my job. So no, that's not a question I asked them because to me, my assumption would be that they would not have conflict of interest because it puts the municipality and the company at risk. I, I'm not gonna debate this. This is, this is my stance and this is, this is, this is all I can say. Is that to me, conflict of interest is black and white. Either you're in it or you're not.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. So we do have a recommendation that has been moved, seconded, and I'll clarify that a decision is, this recommendation is not a, is not a motion going to council. The decision is not going to be made tonight. It has been tabled to October twelfth, regular meeting council. It's not a decision being made tonight. So just October twelfth, yeah.
Can I just add to, in that recommendation, by reducing one member of council, that would increase four people to five, right?
Yeah, that certainly, yeah, the, the number of seven doesn't change.
Exactly.
No, the.
According to this, they are.
Yeah, the board will consist of seven voting members. The board shall be comprised of, if amended, one member of council as elected by the majority of council in an open meeting, the CAO of the village, five people who are members of the local community who offer business, financial, or other appropriate skills considered desirable by the company and council. So you would not have an even vote, I guess, I guess is what you're trying to.
So would the member of council and the administrator be required to have appropriate experience in business administration or other related things?
Certainly desirable.
But not expect.
But.
No more than we're expected to be.
Correct.
Fully versed in municipal politics. Correct, would be my assumption.
Yeah. The five people, Gordon, who are members of the local community who offer business, financial, other appropriate skills to consider desirable by the company and council. The current iteration of this policy being considered is one member of council as elected by the majority of council in an open meeting. It would be undesirable for a, this council to send a member of council who does not have a particular skill set desirable by both council and the company.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to clarify about this timeline. The policy eighty-one comes into effect January first.
Yes.
But the counselors aren't appointed till the next AGM.
Correct.
So in the meantime, so why would you do that? Aren't you creating a gap between January and the next AGM? Could you not avoid it by putting those together? That the counselor or the directors that have conflict stay on until the new counselors come.
Sorry, that, that, that's the point, is so that we don't have a sudden mass exodus of, of the, of the directors that are currently there. So the policy becomes enacted in January first, twenty twenty-two. So whoever is on the board stays on the board, if they want to remain on the board, until the AGM comes.
Okay, that wasn't clear to us, was it? We didn't understand that. We understood when we asked Owen, or sorry, the mayor, that come January first, we're all gone.
It's great, no, no, this, this is only, comes into effect on January one, but the transition of the board.
So there's gonna be a proper transition. Going to be a proper transition, because that's always important.
Yeah.
I, I would suggest that any member of council, uh, that will be appointed to the board. Go to the six months or seven months worth of board meetings.
Mm hmm.
To get a prize.
Yep.
Of, of said dealings, whether, whether, uh, you're actually a, a voting member at that time or not, uh, it won't happen until the H E M ends.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm drinking.
Yep, quite a clarification on that, then, so. The council appointment would not be made until. What date?
The date.
No, I'm confused now with the timelines.
So the date would be when, uh, Belmont Community Forest, Belmont Industrial Park holds their H E M.
Okay.
Following year, yeah, or, or the next available council meeting afterwards. Ideally, if A G Ms could be held at the same time as the council meetings, that would make it a lot simpler, but if that is, if, if the company's not wanting to do that, they would have to be at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Mudd cleared? No.
That better.
Wait.
Usually try to hold their H E Ms in April.
Okay, so.
Likely April when the financials are done.
When they're adopted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to be audited, it takes time to get the auditing done.
Boy. I'm in this room.
We.
See me. Auditors going ferociously.
Everybody loves odds.
Yeah. Especially Mrs. McNeen. Um. Further, any clarity needed on the recommendations moving forward? No. Needed, uh, we need an all favor, even on the recommendation from the committee of all. Yeah. All in favor on the recommendations that, uh, two to one. Basically, is that, that's the only amendment.
Two to one?
Two counselors, two, one counselor, uh, to, to be on the board composition.
Yeah.
All in favor? Carrie. We do have another, uh, recommendation to consider, and that's the amendments to the Belmont Industrial Park Articles of incorporation. So, uh, to begin discussion, uh, we now have a recommendation. In policy eighty-one, and as Mr. Carson, uh. Brought up, one where both of the, uh, articles would have to be amended to match policy eighty-one, and currently in the V C F. Uh, Articles of incorporation, uh, it says two counselors, one staff. And in the V I P articles, it says. Doesn't actually mention counselors or staff, so.
And says no counselors and staff.
No counselor, it mentions no counselors or staff, okay, I'll take your word for it, so, um. To bring the articles in line with the policy. We would need a recommendation to council from the committee of the whole. That we amend the Belmont Industrial Park Articles of incorporation. Board composition. To be one member of council and the C A, and, and a staff per. The C A O of the village. Correct?
That's correct.
Right.
But ask you to also include amending the company purpose.
Company purpose, thank you very much. Well, let's, let's get forward composition.
Yeah, so we, do we have time to all look at the two different versions?
Tradition, let's say the next board meeting.
If we could do that at our next board meeting, because we're, you know, we're just not really clear of the difference and.
If the company.
Like our input when we have a.
Well, the, the idea. For this committee of the whole is to align, now that there is a recommendation coming to council on August the twelfth. To amend. Uh, policy eighty-one. Would only make sense to bring that particular section, uh, that talks to board composition within the articles. To match that, that's all, that's all, that's all this recommendation would be doing.
Okay, so we have time now to go back and, and just take another look, I'd like to look.
Sure. I think, I think I. Craig and I just kind of mentioned that one article says, and correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, V C F says two counselors, one staff from the village will be on the board. V I P says no representation from the village, okay?
But. It has one more statement at the bottom, it says the board should not be, should not be different from the Belmont Community Forest Board, so the articles themselves conflict with themselves, so V I P conflicts with itself.
Yes, I understand all that, I thought you did both company.
Oh, we haven't. We, we haven't, we haven't got that yet, no. No, no, that's just.
Baby steps.
Board composition as it looks on policy eighty-one, board composite, composition as it reflects in the Articles of incorporation, that's it, that's all the recommendations were coming up.
Okay.
Do we, two separate recommendations, or we can just wrap? The C F and the I P in one recommendation to match. Policy eighty-one as amended. Potentially.
Yeah, I, I would say, I, I would say this, I would recommend to the committee that, um. That, that an amendment to the V C F articles be reflected. Uh, as policy eighty-one suggests, and that the V I P articles match.
Amended as well.
In, in terms of board competition, composition, match the V C F.
That's kind of what I said, but do we do it one?
We can, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it's just a recommendation.
That's it, yeah, I mean, uh, what it looks like on October the twelfth, staff will forget, the, the legal, it goes.
Respectfully, I, I don't know if I'm going to be able to get them both amended before the twelfth, so at the very least, I would be able to have that drafted into you for the last meeting in October.
Well, maybe it is, takes time. Let's try. One suggest. Uh, would anybody like to make that recommendation?
I'll make the recommendation as you worded it.
You worded it, I'm just making sure it's clear for everybody in the gallery.
Good.
Well, seconded, as you both have done.
Uh, any discussion on recommendations? Again, not to be decided on tonight, we'll be moving forward to a future meeting. All in favor? Let's carry. Uh. On discussions, yeah, so we need recommendations, uh, anything further from administration under item six?
Yeah.
So, counselor?
Are we going to speak to the company purpose at this point?
Might be. Good. Um, I, 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 I'm not comfortable with it, I just don't have the articles in front of me, I mean, those can be amended down as well, I think.
It can, and, and it is outside the purpose of what the committee of all was, was called.
But certainly, Mr. Kirsten, it can be amended to reflect the true spirit of what the industrial park would be looking at.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, nothing else, I'll ask for a general of the committee. Uh, so I, I know, I need a mover first, sorry, uh, Council Pearson, Council. G, uh, all in favor of a German of the committee? Cue. Back into. Uh, the regular meeting. We have, uh. We do have a couple of, uh. Recommendations to reflect on coming up to October twelfth, and potentially another meeting, but certainly October twelfth to, for board composition. Uh, and for the regular meeting, are there any public comments this evening on items considered by council?
Business motions to pay.
This is your, this is your two minutes.
We'll take that long.
Thank you, thank you for pushing the pause button ever so briefly, so that we at least got to ask some questions and tell your, your feelings, and. Thanks for coming to our meetings, and I hope we'll see you guys in the future. And, uh, yeah, we'll keep working along as partners.
And it's reciprocated, and I, I think we, we also need to be more vocal in our thanks to you and the board. And, and the performance that, uh, that this company has really pushed the bar, so thank you.
We are the N B of a lot of places.
I hear.
Because.
When we were, uh, invited in person to our municipal conventions, it's everything that I hear is, wow, that community.
Yeah, and I just, I'll say one more time, I think that the board matters, and, uh. The G M, the general manager, obviously, has been wonderful, and. We're grateful.
Thank you, further public comments this evening? Oh, sorry, I should, I should ask you to state your name and your area residence as well.
My name is Runner, I'm in Belmont, B C.
Thanks.
I, I just had one since the decision on this agenda is postponed till, did you say two weeks from now, or?
Yeah, so from a, from a procedural standpoint, we were considering much of this, uh, at our previous council meeting. Uh, Council Blanche asked that we table it, what that means, uh, from Bob's meetings or Robert's rules of order, uh, means that we're just going to put it on the table for a minute.
Yeah.
Uh, to be considered at another time, typically the next meeting.
Right.
Uh, this special meeting was called so we could have this kind of discussion moving forward.
Yeah, it was, it was my, during that time, it would make sense to, to maybe look at their policies and how they match conflicts of interest in different community forests. Just for something to consider, maybe, like, I know, I understand the conflict of interest as the F O, you're trying to eliminate it at all costs, but. Like, I know there's supposed to no gray areas, but, um, but if it's something the rest of the province does, like, in every community forest. N B C manages a conflict of interest, because they want that experience, maybe it'd be, it would be smart for us to consider that, too.
You also have to remember, Mr. Tony, that we have one of the top solicitors on the line, so it's the. To look at another community forest and see how they manage one way or the other. Speeding is speeding, seatbelt phones are seatbelt fines, there's no, there's nothing, uh, I'm just. Yeah, don't know where I was going with that, but you have to understand that taking the example of another may not be the best practice, that's all I'm saying.
I understand that, I just to preserve one of the best community forests in B C, it might be something we'd have to do, but that, yeah, this is my.
And we appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Can I make a comment?
As long as it's not debate.
Not debate, um, and not to be devil's advocate, but, but the policy is. Being put in place for this and future possible corporations.
Mm hmm.
So. We have to be careful, we're not setting that standard for future as well.
Okay.
And that's, I think we have to forward look when we're, we're looking at this position, because, yeah, I mean. You don't know what our next corporation could be, and we're pretty progressive to look at, so.
Makes sense, so, that's all, appreciate it, yeah.
Thanks for your comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Other public comments this evening? Green on motion received. Council Blanche, Council Pearson, all in favor receipt. It's carried, uh, we're not giving notice to proceeding camera this evening, so, uh, I will ask for German, Council Pearson. Okay, sure.